Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. We could have roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Andrews.
Here.
Commissioner Minkoff.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox.
Here.
And Chair Stephenson.
Here.
And Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Sorry about that.
Okay, with that, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Prickett will be leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any public wishing to speak this evening? Ah ha, this is me.
I'm.
Come on forward, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. I just, I mentioned this last night, oh, Adrian, Adrian, Mr. Troutdale. I mentioned this at City Council last night, I think I was over here. I've been obviously following the developments of the home fort construction, which is fantastically interesting. I'll have, I'll have pictures like you, or the front row, once, once this is. And for the most part, it has not been intrusive to residents, at least on Forest Street, until the last event, at which point Forest Street is turning into one lane party line. So it sort of has a bad portent of what that street could be like, once that complex is fully populated. It's definitely something that the city will want to keep an extremely close eye on, and get on top of in the dedication, certainly, to have it sooner than later. After talking to Ray Young and Travis Holden, the suspicion is that the collection of parked cars is a combination of the home fort construction and also county workers who have incurred proposals on Buxton, but in either case, it's still, right, 12, 13, 14 edition cars on that street, which is not sustainable for residents or for local works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other public wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, we will move on. Did you want to do minutes, or did you want to wait on those?
Um, I would like to do minutes. I know that we, moving forward, we're going to be adding a little bit more of the substantive issues, but if you want to, Chair, I'm going to let you decide.
Okay.
We can wait, and I can, I can go back and add a bit.
You want to just do that? That be okay? Is that okay with you, Paul, too?
You're talking about later in this meeting?
No, just tweaking the minutes a little bit and doing them next meeting.
Okay, well, I do have some corrections.
Okay. So do you want to send those in, and then we could do them next meeting? That be okay?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so we'll just table those till the next meeting. And now, without further ado, staff has a presentation on the downtown parking study.
Thank you, Chair Stephenson. So Marley Boxler, Economic Development Coordinator, and I are here this evening to present an update on the Sandy River Shuttle and Downtown Parking Study. This is a pretty high-level overview of the study so far. You can't find all the documents related to the study online if you go to our planning page, and it's under Active Projects. You'll see all the technical memos from the meetings that we've had so far. And so the technical memos are up there, and I think the, the survey is up there as well, or at least it was. We have given this presentation to the CAC, we're giving it to the Planning Commission tonight, and then we're also going to present to T-CAB next week. So we're doing this little roadshow about this study and what's been done up to date, and then let you all know what the next steps are. So everyone is just informed about this project. So with that, I'm going to share my screen. And then, Marley, do you want to kick us off here?
Sorry, I was muted. Seems like years into this, and I still can't get that quite right. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me here tonight, the Planning Commission. My, if you don't know me, my name is Marley Boxler. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator with the City of Troutdale. Think I know all of you, though. And as Erica was saying, we're giving a quick presentation on the Troutdale Transit Feasibility Study and, or feasibility and parking study. So this project sort of originated in a couple of ways, and it's actually a combination of two different projects combined because of their overlap and the way that they dovetail. We received a grant from Travel Oregon to do the transit feasibility study, looking really specifically at the Sandy River and could there be a shuttle to improve access to the Sandy River and allow people who don't have cars to be able to utilize that as well. And then we also have been planning on doing a parking study for years now, and it's been budgeted for over a number of different years. And with COVID, that challenged things, and this was the year to finally circle back to that and get that done. So we are also doing the downtown parking study. So the two of those dovetail really nicely, and so we join them together. And myself and Erica are project managing that, and we have consultants from Kittleson who are helping us. And then we also have a technical advisory committee that is made up of a number of different stakeholders and downtown business representatives and residents, so on and so forth, who are interested in this topic.
Sorry, Marley, my screen froze.
Ah, yeah. So here's that overlap between the transit feasibility study and the parking study that I was just mentioning. So as you can see, we're about halfway through this project. We started in spring 2024 with a lot of background review in our first technical advisory committee meeting. We reviewed all of the parking inventory that's in downtown. We studied plans and policies within the city, as well as looking at case studies outside of the city. We then moved into our existing conditions and opportunities analysis, which involved a parking survey that was done in late July of the summer. We also did a public survey on the shuttle, the potential for the future shuttle, and what sort of amenities people would like to see, or other resources they would need or want to see in something like that. And now we are almost finished with our alternatives analysis, so creating the different alternatives options and evaluating those. We've got some draft parking and policy strategies that are in the works to create. They are not in the works to implement, but they're in the works to create and then be presented back to you all. And we have the draft shuttle alternatives. We'll be moving into another round of public engagement process in our third Technical Advisory Committee meeting. And then in April of 2025, we will have all the recommendations finalized. We'll have that final shuttle feasibility report and the parking management plan to move forward with. So the tax role and responsibility has really been to provide that meaningful feedback and ground truth data as we develop these plans. When they participate in the tax meetings, they review the materials, they serve as a sounding board, and they help spread the word and serve as advocates for the final plan. So for the transit study, the work that we've done so far is, as I mentioned earlier, we did a case study review. So we looked at three different operations that are in the Pacific Northwest. We've got Ride the River, which I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, and Bend on the Deschutes. We've got the Little Spokane Shuttle in Spokane, Washington, and then we've got the Float the Boise in Boise, Idaho. In the case study findings, we learned that it's good to provide a limited number of stops, focusing on those most popular locations to garner that initial interest before spreading out into additional destinations and ensuring that the stops have the supporting amenities, that they're connected with other forms of transit, they have a consistent schedule to establish that familiarity and trust. I think that's really key, because people want to, you know, in order to convince people to, to do something or to change your behavior, we want them to be able to trust that that service will be on time and operational. They, we also want to use the shuttle as an opportunity to educate about river safety and sustainable visitor management. And having those people on the bus gives us that opportunity, and then also providing robust communication and marketing with regular community engagement opportunities and equity-focused communities. We have also conducted a number of different interviews with all of these stakeholders or organizations. We asked some similar questions to each, but also targeted questions to each of those organizations. We really did gain a lot of understanding through that process. And on the website that Erica was just referring to, you can see the summary of the case study report and the interviews. So you can read all about those in more detail. We did a public engagement survey that was open for a very long period of time, from July 30th through October 31st. It was specifically open that long because of the timing of the champion and wanting to make sure that we could get more of our residents in, but in there. We received over 135 responses online and in person. We did some in-person targeted, like, we went out to the river and actually asked people to take the survey. And we went to First Fridays, and we went to the Bullamette River, too, and talked to people there and said, you know, if this was on the Sandy River, would this be something you would utilize? So we got some really great responses, and the topics that we asked about were, what shuttle stops should there be, what amenities and what barriers are there to car-free access in Troutdale? The top three barriers to car-free travel were limited frequency of transit, limited location of transit stops, and long amount of time needed to take transit, which I think are not shocking discoveries for each of us in the room, knowing the service that we have with existing transit in Troutdale. So those are the, those barriers to convincing people to use a service like this. And the rest of the findings can be, again, found on that website where you can see the rest of the information. On the website, there is also, I'll just quickly pull that up really quick to make sure that I can cover that. The case study final review is up there, and then moving into the parking, the parking inventory and parking survey are online as well. So we'll get into that here, but just letting you know that those are on the website.
Thanks, Marley. So I'm going to go ahead and move into the parking study and what we found through this exercise in downtown Troutdale. So we did a parking, an on-street and off-street parking study in July this past summer. This map on the screen shows the streets that were, the streets and the parking lots that were inventoried. So the streets, we went, um, we did, we looked at the East Azur, Columbia River Highway, Second and Second Street, you know, Buxton, Dora, and Harlow, all those streets downtown. The off-street parking lots we looked at are listed there down below. We had eight off-street parking lots. So the on-street parking inventory, generally, we had 276 on-street parking stalls. Five of those stalls were specialty uses, and 271 were general-use parking stalls. On-street parking is available on both sides of most streets in downtown Troutdale. Approximately a third of all on-street parking stalls have time limits. Some stalls on Dora and Harlow have four-hour time limits, and then the other stalls and streets provide about a two-hour time limit. Approximately two-thirds of all on-street parking stalls have no limits or restrictions. And then there are a couple of on-street parking ADA stalls as well. So the off-street parking inventory shows that we have a total of 395 spaces. We have, 344 are for general-use parking stalls, and then 51 are specialty-use parking stalls. We have off-street parking is available in several different lots, surface lots downtown. Most of the off-street parking stalls have no time limits or restrictions. However, the city, we do offer a overnight parking pass. And then off-street parking also includes ADA stalls and the EV charging stations that you see in two of the lots downtown now have those EV parking charging stations. I do want to highlight that the parking inventory did look at some of the constraints downtown in regards to parking. So, you know, the topography can be a challenge for people. We, I want to be nice here in my words, but there's, there could be kind of a mishmash of parking signage downtown as well, and it's not very consistent. So those are kind of the challenges that were looked at downtown for off-street parking and things we could be doing better here in the future. We did a parking survey, and we collected some data on July, on Thursday, July 18th and Saturday, July 20th. And we looked at, you know, the occupancy of the stalls, the duration of stays, and what the turnover was. And I'm just going to quickly give you some of the general findings that were found. I, I want to encourage you to go to the report kind of online. And if you're a stickler for details, get into the matrices and, and read all the fine print. But the general findings that came out of the parking survey was that for, the overall peak hour tends to occur midday downtown, between 12:00 and 2:00 p.m. That's when you see most of the stalls being used for parking. The overall off-street parking occupancy rates tend to be higher than the on-street parking occupancy rates. So we're seeing more people park in the parking lots instead of using the on-street parking stalls. The overall system has enough parking to accommodate demand. However, there are specific areas that we are seeing that exceeding capacity, and that includes the southern sides of Dora Avenue, Southeast Harlow, and Buxton. And you probably have all kind of experienced this throughout different times of the day with the different uses that are in downtown, those high-demand uses such as, you know, restaurants. For the on-street parking occupancy, it really increases in the morning, and then it remains relatively flat throughout the day. And then the average duration of stay really varies by street. However, it tends to be roughly around less than three hours. So those are kind of the general findings for, you know, off-street and off, the off-street and, off-street and on-street parking inventory. But when we do look, I do want to highlight and mention this, when we look at future parking demand, the estimate of future parking demand, it really suggests that demand will likely exceed the capacity of the current on-street and off-street parking supply. And so, given this, we really need to look at the potential for additional parking facilities, and we need to monitor, keep monitoring the parking downtown and be thinking creatively about those parking management strategies. And that is the next step that's coming out of this work that Marley said. So late January and, and early February, we will get that parking management memo that lays out the menu of options the city could consider for parking management strategies.
Commissioner Lee.
So this study was done prior to this facility right behind us opening.
Correct.
So this specific area that we're in, the parking has substantially changed in that. Secondly, my question, the Troutdale House and Depot City Park, Troutdale House parking is not public parking, is it?
Some, Marley, and I, I know you're over there, I believe a few of the parking stalls are.
Yeah, the, so the parking lot with Troutdale House is split a little bit. Part of it is part of the Depot City Park property, and part of it is the Troutdale House. So there's a couple of spaces that we can utilize additionally. We're working on a shared use arrangement or agreement with the Troutdale House for the future, because they recognize that they don't use their parking at all hours of every single day and that they need it for their specific times with their events and weddings. But there are other opportunities in other times when they aren't using that parking. And one of the things that we saw in the parking study is how the weekday, like weekday midday demand for parking downtown is very high. And there's a lot of stress on that because of the amount of service-based businesses and appointment-based businesses that we have that are open, you know, Monday through Friday, eight to five. So we're working with them to try to create a shared use agreement that would allow us to have some public parking in that area when they're not utilizing it. So we wanted to understand what was happening currently.
I have a question.
Okay, hang on one second, Commissioner Minkoff. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, two more questions here. The other one is the Old City Hall parking lot. Is that the one right in front of the Old City Hall, or is that the parking lot above Good Coffee?
I believe that's the parking lot above.
Good Coffee.
Good Coffee.
Okay. And then lastly, you have an inventory of parking spots with time limits on them. But in reality, we have no time limits on our parking, because we don't enforce them. And I would like to see, when I get on City Times, that's going to be one of my projects, I'd like to see enforcement on those. Okay, that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Minkoff.
We have two questions. The first is, when did you make this presentation to the Citizens Advisory Committee?
I believe that was the November meeting.
November.
I believe.
Just last month?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The second question is, what consideration has been made for striping the downtown area marking off parking spaces? Because when those are not marked off, people park far enough apart from each other. You could barely, oh, you could almost fit another car in between. But what it does is it take between two cars, it's actually taking up three spaces. So I, that's been mentioned at other city council meetings, but I don't know if you're adding that in. Secondly, meters, putting meters on those parking spaces to both generate revenue for the city, and secondly, to move cars along, you know, giving it, giving it sufficient time, two-hour parking or three hours or something. But have either of those been included in your feasibility study?
Those are great. That's a great.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Marley. I'm going to let you go first.
Okay, I was just going to say, that's a great question. I think that both of those things are topics that will be discussed in the next memo that goes out that talks about the parking management strategies. I will say that from the marking of the street standpoint, they've done a lot of different studies on this, and they will go into detail on that in the next memo, I am sure. But what we've seen in a totally is that the amount of space that you have to dedicate to those markings is greater than what cars actually take up when they park. And so you end up losing some of that additional space than, than when you don't mark it. But we will make sure that that's addressed in that next memo. And then the conversation of fees and, and charging for downtown parking is certainly something that I think will be included in that next memo, but will be a conversation that the community needs to have at large. And I think that there will be a lot of discussion about whether or not to implement something like that. I do know that Glen Otto Park, you'll see, is one of the parking lots that was included in this study. And I think that there will be a separate conversation about charging for parking at Glen Otto than there will be for the other parking lots, because Glen Otto, we know, is predominantly used by non-residents and could have different considerations maybe than downtown. So those can be, we can have the same, the conversation about charging for parking, but recognizing that those two areas might have different results from that conversation.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wilcox?
Thank you, Chair Stephenson. I've looked at the two major studies, the survey and the actual study, I guess, so you would distinguish the two, in some detail. I have a few comments, not, nothing super detailed, but my first one is kind of interesting. This is a second person, Commissioner Minkoff is the second person I've heard address this, and I had the same thought. When they're calculating, or when they're figuring out how many curbside spaces are available downtown on this historic highway and Second Street, for example, where they're not delineated, they're, they're figuring 22 feet per space. So as Mr. Minkoff was pointing out, if you have 220 feet of curb, you might get 10 vehicles, you know, if you have a marked out, you get 10 vehicles in. But, you know, if people are parking in Troutdale, like they park in Portland bumper-to-bumper, you might get 15 cars in there. So that, that's about a, you know, the, the 22 feet is a conservative estimate, because it's kind of, you know, the large, as large as, as few as spaces as you would have. It would, you know, give you a minimum or maximum number of spaces. Another comment I had, they were counting some private spaces as potentially publicly available. I wrote down one of the quotes in particular in the Discovery Block. They say, "There is an additional 10 stalls designated on the southern side that are reserved for residents of the apartments to the south." I mean, those are like carports, and, and also that entire parking lot, the Discovery Block parking lot is technically private property. That's not, that's not a public lot. And along the same lines, the tech under spaces on the north side of downtown, those are all private spots that they, they seem to be including as, as possible parking, but they're, and they're really not. I mean, they're, you know, they're, they're private property of those business owners. Let's see, I have just a couple of other comments. Mayor Square, they refer to the spaces that are next to the two charging spaces, EV charging spots, as, let's see, what's the term they used, longer than standard. I went there and measured them the other day, and they're actually standard, not longer than standard. They're 18 feet deep, and all the ones on the north side are eight by 16, which is considered compact spaces. So they kind of mischaracterize those spaces. And as they mentioned, those aren't designated for, well, they said they were available for trucks, but they're not, not designated for extra-long vehicles. Let's see, the one thing I learned from the study is Depot Park, the parking behind the Depot, I didn't even know that existed. So that was kind of interesting. And one other thing I have, finally, is on the, I couldn't follow. And one other thing I have finally is on the, I couldn't follow their methodology in calculating turnover, how many, how, how people, how long people stay in a space or how many, how much rotation there is over time. You might have somebody spending nine hours in one space on Historic Highway and, you know, in the space in front of them, you might see six people over the course of that nine hours. So I didn't follow how they can, they could possibly keep track of that and accurate measure of actual turnover within spaces. I think that's enough for now, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilcox. Commissioner Allen.
So some, I see some what seems to be light business input. So I have my opinions about parking and whether I like or don't like meters and stuff like that. But I don't have any skin in the game in the sense that I'm not a business in that area. And so I wonder how the businesses in that area, how well they've been engaged and what their general feel was.
Marley, do you want to speak to the businesses on our TAC committee?
Well, it sounds like you're speaking specifically to the conversation of paid parking in downtown and whether we've surveyed them on that or asked them their opinions on that.
That would be one of the topics, but yeah, generally, what, did they engage much in the survey? Have they sought their input?
So at this time, we haven't, we don't have the list of recommended management policies. So we haven't done a survey or anything that says, you know, like, these are some options, rank your favorites or anything like that. And we have a couple of downtown business owners on the Technical Advisory Committee. But beyond that, we haven't, we haven't done a survey with them necessarily at this point. We've just been collecting the data from the inventory counts and then the actual, like, when, when it says parking survey, it literally just means like from them being out there and counting it and, and evaluating it for the whole day. So we haven't done like a, a written survey or anything like that with the business owners yet.
Okay, thank you.
But moving forward, if any type of strategy or strategies, we will be communicating heavily with the business owners downtown.
Oh, that's wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we don't, we don't plan on, at this time, we're just gathering the information. We won't be implementing or, or proposing, like, that we adopt anything until we gather their, their input.
I sure appreciate that, thank you.
Marley, can you help me again? What all is included in specialty use?
For the parking stalls? ADA, EV. I think that's it. Because I think those are the only ones that we have downtown are ADA parking spaces and EV par. Oh, there's a couple of stalls in downtown that are motorcycle parking spaces.
And they're in the.
Not sure if those were counted in that or not, but there is, yeah, on Historic River Highway, there's a small section that says motorcycle parking. Which I don't know that the motorcyclists know that exists or would necessarily utilize it. But it's there.
It, it's just an interesting kind of statistic when you look at it. And I know why this is, if you put in a small parking lot and you put in two spots, one of them is going to be ADA and the other one's going to be a standard. And if you only put in one spot, it would be an ADA spot. But when you look at it, it's like of the off-street parking spots, 12.9% of those are specialty use, so they're either EV or ADA. And then you look at the ones that we kind of control, which is the on-street. And you have 1.8% of those are specialty use. So I'm just hoping that, you know, at least we're meeting the ADA standard in some of those things.
Yes, they did say in the study that we are meeting the standards for the on-street ADA parking spaces based on what they evaluated.
Okay.
Yeah, we did add two new ADA parking spaces this past year. I don't know if you recall that or not, but we put one right in front of Celebrate Me Home. And then there's another one that is in front of the vacant lot adjacent to the Vision Clinic. So there's two new spaces downtown because that was a priority for the, the city and something that was identified in the CIP and a couple of other planning documents.
It just seems that's, it's kind of a fairly high standard on the, the parking lot side, so thank you. Commissioner Prickett.
Is, is, in this study, are you going to include signage? Like, if you don't know what's a motorcycle parking.
Yes.
So more consistent?
More consistent signage.
More continuity, so they all kind of look alike and you're not kind of guessing?
You got it, Shirley, that's it, that's what we want.
Yes, that's gonna be a very high recommendation.
I didn't even know there was motorcycle parking.
Now you can park your motorcycle there.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone have anything else? He's got your website.
The website, yep.
Don't mess around here. Okay, Marley, thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah, feel free to reach out if you have any questions and we will be sure to keep you all involved in the next stage of this. And when we have those, those management strategies, we will let you know.
All right.
Thanks, Marley.
Thank you.
All right, so we are just moving on here. All right, new business, it looks like marijuana code update work plan. So as you may know, the ballot measure passed in November, which would, would, which would allow marijuana retailers here in Troutdale. Currently, we prohibit marijuana retailers in Troutdale, so we need to update our code. In January, we're going to be coming back to the commission and we're going to have, we're going to pose, you know, two questions. Do we want to go back to the original code that we had for Troutdale that, that allowed retail marijuana in, in certain areas of the city? Or do we want to take a look at that old code and possibly do some revisions? We probably expect the revisions won't take too long to make, if there's any. So in January, we will go ahead and we will notify the state for their 35-day rule that we will be making amendments to the development code regarding marijuana uses. And then hopefully, crossing my fingers, we'll come back to the planning commission in early and late February to, you know, discuss any changes and move forward with the public hearings process.
I would probably say what would probably be easiest would be to revert back to the code that we had. And then we have something that we could work with rather than starting over because when we did it the first time, it kind of took a little while.
You can always make it better.
Yeah.
Question on that, right? Thank you. Is it going to be easier in the long run for us to simply come out of the gate with a revised version rather than reinstate the old one and then change it again later down the road?
They both require the same amount of work.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess that would, that would remove the time constraint if we just reintroduce what we had on there before.
I was saying, just if we just come back with that and then we can edit that.
Oh, yeah.
Or do whatever we feel like we need to do to scratch it, edit it, whatever. It's just kind of a starting place.
Right, yeah.
From what I remember, that seems like a better idea.
Yeah, because may I have any struggle with that one?
That one took a bit, that was a rough ride. Okay, you don't care.
No, I'll do it. It's gonna come back to me too.
Does that work for everyone? Okay. All right, Commissioner Wilcox. Good.
I had a question related to Tetra in particular, since that kind of the subject of the moratorium, more or less. They went in, I looked up the old hearing, they went in in 2018, so they've been around a while. And at the time, there was no plan for a park at the URA. And now there is. And I measured the distance and they're within 500 feet of what will be the new park. So I'm curious what their status would be. I know it says that they're safe having come in before a park was installed, but so I think, I think they're okay, but what if someone comes in behind them? Would it be non-conforming or how, how would that be classified?
They would be classified as legal non-conforming. So their use is grandfathered, you know, into that site. If somebody came in and wanted, let's just say we reverted back to the old code and somebody wanted to put in a facility within, you know, 1,000 feet of a park, we would.
In April, let's say.
In April, let's, yeah, let's just say in April. Reverting back to the, the old code, it wouldn't allow for that. So they would have to pick another site. So that makes sense, Paul?
Okay, yeah.
You're not going to take an existing business and.
Right.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay.
We are just moving right along. All right, so I want to give a, a little brief CFEK update. In early 20. So in early 2025, the second meeting in January, I'll be giving an update to the city council about the climate-friendly equitable communities work and what options the city needs to consider to adopt before June 30th of next year. I know that we have had a couple of work sessions over the past year on these standards. And the preferred option for planning commission on the standards that we could choose was option B, moving forward with taxing a commercial parking lot, which we currently don't have. And DLCD has given us the green light to develop that language. And at such time, we get a commercial parking lot, that would be, you know, enacted for them to, for us to receive revenue and taxes from them. And then the second option was looking at businesses that employ 50 or more folks and the employees that don't use parking every day. Let's just say they ride transit or WAF or bus or, or carpool. That company would then be required to, they would pay the employee an extra $50 a month for freeing up that, an extra parking space or using, or using transit. So I did some research. We, I contacted the 20 or so businesses here in Troutdale who employ 50 or more people. I heard back. I heard back from eight. And I'm going to share this information.
Thank you.
Can you pass one back down this way? I skipped myself. Perfect, thanks. And I'm, I'm sorry, Paul, and I'm sorry, Kevin, that you don't have this in front of you, but I will, I will send you a copy tomorrow. But I'm just going to talk fairly quickly about the results. But we heard back from McMinimans, Walcott Plumbing, Toyo Tanzo, Skyline Sheet Metal, Apollo, H&amp;H Lumber in the city of Troutdale. And out of all those, and out of the eight businesses that responded, the business with the highest amount of employees that, that don't, that use transit or, or carpool or walk-in pad is McMinimans Edgefield. They indicated that they have 45 employees that use an alternative mode of transportation. The rest were either zero or one to two users of alternate modes of transportation.
I think FedEx and Amazon have the most. People that usually, a lot that, I see them walking, so I don't know if they're going to FedEx. But I see them walking when I'm on my morning walk. A lot of them may use transit, but some of them use transit in the middle of the night when parking problems are an issue.
And I'm going to you know, reach out to some of these folks I haven't heard from again and, and try to get an answer. But as I talk to city council in late January, I'm going to present this information as well and kind of let them know that, that option is the, is the option that, you know, planning commission would like to pursue and to get their feedback on it as well. Because I don't want to move down, I don't want to put together draft code language that ultimately, you know, city council's not on board with. Yeah.
So does Safeway not have 50, 50 people or more?
Up here. Yeah, they would have over 50 and not on the list.
Yeah, there's a few that I've learned that are not on the list. This list was generated from our business license inventory early last year. And some of those businesses that employ 50 or more people got their business license in the spring or summer. So I'm missing like a couple of folks. And I noticed that Safeway, or yeah, Albertsons and McDonald's also. Could be, could be employing 50 or more people.
Well, the new fit, they're open up.
It won't. You can take that one off your list.
Commissioner Andrews.
Just a quick clarification question, is this.
Albertsons.
Are they required to pay $50 per employee or provide each of those employees with the option of a $50 stipend?
A $50 stipend.
Okay, so it's not necessarily a for sure $50 spend, okay.
I guess I would say, can we double check a couple of these emails that we have? Because like FedEx is gns@businesslicenses.com.
Oh, yes, that's, I, yes, I've already fixed that.
Okay, because a couple of those, we can probably find a.
Oh, yeah.
Something that might get to a desk a little.
Yep.
Safer.
So these are the people you heard back from, the yellow ones?
The yellow ones.
Did they say how they felt about the, the idea?
And can you repeat it?
Were they open to it?
I didn't, we didn't ask that question necessarily.
Like the city of Troutville, are they open to doing that for that one person or?
I was, I would say if this is the option that the city wants to move forward with.
She's gonna make sure they do it.
Right, they only have one person.
It's a long $50 walk from up there. It's a long fifty dollar walk from up there.
How about um, what more middle school, do they have more than fifty people?
So that falls, I think that they fall under the the umbrella of the Reynolds School District.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I wish it would.
Yep. So you mentioned that you're going to council. Right, with this.
The second meeting in January.
Before we finish this. We finished this part off already.
So I am giving them an update.
Okay.
Um, and then I'm gonna be letting them know that, you know, Planning Commission, this is the option that they would like to pursue. Do you have any thoughts or no input?
Okay.
And then it comes back to us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And we're not thinking that they would have the opportunity to edit that if they needed to when it went to them?
I think whatever input they provide at that time will come back to Planning Commission for consideration.
Look at me? This is your fault.
Okay.
Great. You still have the ball.
I know, staff commu- staff communication, I had to see where it was at on the agenda. Alright, um so I want to let everyone know that the two fifty-seventh project is gonna be starting in mid-January. Um the Stark Street Bridge, um it plans to open this, in the spring as well. So it will have at least a a a traffic lane, will be open for traffic.
I thought it was February, I thought it was.
There's a possibility of one lane in February.
Late Feb- late February.
Right.
Yep.
It's called Carriage.
Yes.
My question on the two fifty-seventh project, how much is that gonna be affecting? How much of traffic is gonna be affected by that? Because right now, it's already backed up to twenty Fifth Street when the light turns red. During peak, peak hours in the afternoon. And then you throw a school bus in there or two and then it's down to twenty during school, so we're gonna have a lot of frustrated truckers and commuters. It's hard enough to get out of my neighborhood without having to go an extra mile just to get out of it. Uh a- anytime, well, not, tonight it wasn't bad, but sometimes it's hard to get out. But the, it's a major transit route and they're gonna shut it down for maintenance. It'd be back to go to Columbia or to highway probably. I'm sorry, but that's what's gonna happen. Um, I just want to make sure that people are aware that it's not gonna, it's not gonna be safe even across that street. The construction. Because they're gonna, I know, I know they're gonna narrow the lanes and widen the sidewalk and put a protected bike lane in, wh- which I don't understand why because people don't use it anyway, they use the sidewalk. I saw electric bicycle guy going down a sidewalk, almost hit a lady that was walking. So I'm not really too sure that a protected bike lane is gonna be, be protective of the bike maybe, but not the pedestrian because the bicycle can go on the sidewalk as well. And if they're gonna do that, they need to ticket bicycles that aren't following rules. That's the way I would pass, I'm sorry. They should follow the same rules.
Commissioner Prickett, you don't have to be sorry. Well, understood.
Especially when a uh moto- motorized bicycle can go twenty-five to thirty-five miles an hour.
Well, on that subject, I've seen some communications about, because corporate people are very upset about Stark Street Bridge being closed, it's really hurting them.
Yeah.
Uh and Buxton being messed up and now two fifty-seven being messed up. Multnomah County has said that it will be starting in January, they cannot change their timeline because of the paving, weather and all of the stuff that they need to do. But there will be no street closure initially on this and that by the, they won't be closing streets before Stark Street Bridge is open, again, they say. So that pushes it out, it sounds like, to at least February or March before any street closures. They'll be doing the subsequent work and stuff. So.
Do you know if there are intermittent closures before then?
Sounded like there weren't intermittent ones.
I think they're trying to limit the street closures until after school is is let out in early summer.
Okay. So I guess on this um this is, and I am gonna say I'm sorry, but um I think this is one, I've read some of the stuff that's on the city's website and it looks like a lot of folks just aren't overly enthused about this project um even happening and um I hope this doesn't end up being one of those things that's becomes a what not to do in a national planning conference. You know, when it's all said and done.
And one of the live crosswalks is gonna be at twenty-sixth.
Yes, I believe so.
So people that exit out of twenty-sixth street are gonna have this barrier, they're gonna have to go around either to pull out to go north or pull around or pull out to go um south. And it's gonna be, right now, the safety line is there. So if you can get out at any one time, you can wait there for the traffic to clear to get out. But once you put that in there, I've seen it in Portland, you can't get out. You're stuck to go right, but you can't go left, so you have to go all the way around to get to where you want to go and that, they need to re- really think about a protected and a flashing especially on a major truck route. A sixteen wheeler ain't gonna stop when that light flashes and it's two feet away. A car can, but a truck can't. So it's gonna be like it's gonna be issues.
Yeah.
It's gonna be issues with people crossing. They don't use them anyway, most of the time.
It's a very hard thing.
Yeah.
Two fifty-seven, they're coming down.
And I know you've had multiple conversations with the county um about this whole situation. And um but I would say it's like, I've seen high school sock hops that are planned out than this thing is. You know, I mean, it's just, it's a little scary that we have a road of this magnitude and this is all the attention that it gets. Because I have to respectfully disagree, I've seen it backed up almost to Cherry Park North at PM Peak.
Well.
To start.
Well, I haven't been out down that part in peak hours, so I.
I mean, it backs up a long way.
And you set, probably set to two or three lights, so if they say that's a, a C, it isn't, it's a F. Because it doesn't.
Three lights is a C?
Well, according to them, it's D, I think, if you set through three lights. And then you have an emergency vehicle that's one I'm gonna buy and there's a protected bike lane and you can't move over far enough.
Well, people live longer now, so it's okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
I'm just, just throwing those out, sorry, not your fault, I'm not blaming you.
I, oh, I know, I know.
Blaming you.
I know, I know you're not.
We can't do anything.
I understand that, but you know what, if we don't voice our opinion, it doesn't get heard.
That's right, and I need to hear those opinions so I can relay those opinions back to the proper people.
Buxton is Multnomah County also.
Right, but if, but if I, I do feel that if we don't say anything, the people that we represent are gonna say, why didn't you say something?
That's true.
Alright, we have, I I just want to remind everyone, holiday movie night is coming up on December twenty-first um at Reynolds High School, it starts, the overall festivities start at three, there'll be crafts for kids, the movie will start in the evening and and snacks. And then Commissioner Lemmy, tonight is your last Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah, but you're now in the hot seat.
I know.
So I real- just, you know, I haven't worked with you for too long, but I just really want to say thank you for your dedication and time commitment to the commission and everything that you've done um for the community, you know, regarding, you know, planning and development and.
TCAB.
Trader.
Trader.
TCAB's gonna be worse, really, since you have. Charles going to.
We can read and fish. Yeah, yeah, surely.
Oh, you guys.
Yeah.
Sit back and watch.
Alright, done.
That's it for you. Okay, uh Commissioner Wilcox, you're up first.
Hmm, I have nothing to add.
Okay, Commissioner Minkoff?
Um, I don't either.
Okay, Commissioner Andrews?
Yeah, um, wanted to thank John again for everything you've uh shared. I've learned a lot from being on this organization and you're a very large part of that uh when it comes to discussions we've had and your offhanded hilarious comments on the side and everything from there, I just really appreciate everything you bring to the table and I'm looking forward to having you on City Council and doing more good work. Um, the High Court, so to speak. But uh I'm glad that we're gonna be sending things off to you and I have full faith that you're gonna continue to make an excellent, you know, impact on on the city. So thank you for everything you've done and will continue to do.
Commissioner Prickett.
Again, thank you, it's been great working with you. I, I'm gonna be watching you at the City Council a lot because I know we're gonna make great work out of you and I'm so proud that you are on the City Council. It will even everything out and you're just good at what you do and getting people to work together, so, thank you.
Yeah, no need to say goodbye, just uh.
Yeah, we'll see you.
Congratulations.
You're working with your life.
Yeah, you see her more than I do.
Yeah.
That's it.
I think we have a good council. I think uh you, we're I think it's gonna be cohesive.
I would like that Merry Christmas, this is our last one.
Fair enough. I uh will just say it's been an honor to work with you and you are the epitome of a volunteer. The way you volunteer in the community personally, through your business and the time that you dedicate to TCAB, Council, Planning Commission and all the other things that you do. Um you inspire uh many, myself, but many others to serve and serve well. So thank you for that. Thank you for all the years you've put into this, thank you for putting up with us. And um I, I think we are blessed to have you on the council and um wish you the best of luck. And with that, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and thank you all for all of your effort and all the work that you've put in all year long. It really is appreciated very much, there's a lot to this. A lot of people don't realize how hard the Planning Commission works till they go on council and say, wow, this is easy. Uh but we know, you know, how difficult it is and there's a lot that goes into it. Thank you all for your time and effort and dedication to the city of Troutdale. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening.
I move that for you.
So Zach, a second.
Okay, we have motion, a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioner Minkoff, thank you, Commissioner Wilcox.
Yes.
You're welcome, thank you.